Sure.
How things are going out there with everything?
Morning, everybody. Uh, we've been busy out there the last month or so. It's been a couple of meetings since I've been here. Uh, we were continuing to have equipment failures, um, but we, I believe that we got them fixed. We replaced a couple of net- network switches out there and, and since then, we haven't gone down any. And I think that might have, we might have got ahead of it now. There's still a couple of little problems, um, there's a, the two main computer towers are at their end of life. One of the, the CPU fans not working anymore on one of them. Um, they're also past their, uh, the Windows security updates and all that stuff. Uh, Windows doesn't support them anymore. They should have been replaced according to CEGIS on January, by January 1st. We're still maintaining with them at the moment, but we'll need to get those replaced sometime pretty quick. And those are the main, those are the main towers. Of course, they've been going 24/7 for the last, since 2007. So they, they, no, for the past seven years, I'm sorry. 24/7 for past seven years, and that's a lot on a, on a computer tower. Um, so anyway, um, we've been doing their training. We did our cyber security awareness that was mandated by the state. Uh, 911 mapping training for a new mapping system that's going to be installed, uh, by COG here pretty quick. Uh, we've done all of our FEMA classes now and, and, uh, uh, of course, we've had the coronavirus stuff. We shut down dispatch for any outsiders coming in there. Uh, we've been working with the county judge and the health officials to help create a, a, uh, response for, for the first responders that are going out. Um, that's worked out pretty good. We've had a couple of dispatchers that went out sick. Nothing, no Corona, but of course, we had to have the doctor's notes and all that stuff before they could come back, which made us have to get into our part timers again. Um, Darryl left, so we moved up our main part timer to full time, and that leaves us with two part timers. And they have, they've worked out there full time before, and they have no desire to go back full time. It's just a, they'll come help us out when we need it every once in a while. So it, we're needing to hire another part timer, uh, that's more available, um, and that we can also train up before, um, we're anticipating that one of our full time ladies leaving pretty soon. Um, and we'd like to get her trained up. I've asked for an emergency amendment. I think y'all will be talking about that later on, and I, I hope you'll, you'll consider it. Um, I met with, uh, William Clark Green, who lives south of Dispatch. His meter is actually in the driveway of, of Dispatch, his water meter. Evidently, a few years ago, it, it got crushed somehow, and instead of them fixing that one, they just moved a new one over for whatever reason. And they put up these poles around it to keep people from running over it, hoping that it wouldn't get crushed again. Well, he, he put these little poles out there, and they're just those little chain link fence posts that are real thin. And it is pitch black out there at night, and the angle that you come in off the highway, you just don't see them. And they've been run over 100 times and put back up 100 times. So anyway, he called and asked if he could, uh, and we met out there and looked at it, asked if he could put up a little bit more substantial post out there. Hmm, I don't, didn't see it being a problem. There's been posts up there for a while anyway, so I told him he could. Um, it's just right on the edge, but it's just, it's just right.
Carbon and water supply in District 10.
Yeah, out of carbon, yeah.
Carbon water?
Yes, sir. But other than that, uh, everything's going good. Um, it's, uh, 911 telecommunicator appreciation week, so see one of them, or talk to one of them, just let them know. Anyway, y'all have any questions about anything?
Sheriff, anything, your behalf?
No, sir.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Jason, appreciate it. All right, that takes us to, uh, item number three. Declare as surplus and salvage the 2015 Chevrolet pickup. VIN number, last three numbers is 3753. 2013 Chevrolet Tahoe, the last three VIN numbers are 12834. And get them to sell on government deals. Sheriff, ready to have this one?
Well, finally got my 2015 Tahoe using them. We're wanting to get rid of a couple of vehicles. One of them is a 2015 half ton four by four pickup. Got 125,391 miles. It's white in color. We've got it, the stripes off of it, everything off of it, it's ready to go. Uh, Donnie has expressed some interest in maybe getting that and retiring the one he has here at the courthouse, if that's what y'all are wanting to do. The other one is a 2013 Chevrolet, uh, Tahoe police package. The district attorney, uh, task force said at one time, it is not in good shape at all. We've had all kinds of problems with it, and if you drive it very far, you're going to have more problems with it. It needs to be sold on government deals for sure. It's a liability that needs to go away. Donnie told me, he said, if, if we want it, Alex.
It's a 2004, man, pardon, wait a minute. It's a, it's a 2004, so it's 16 years old. It has 150 or 60,000 miles. Yours has got 125,000?
Yes, sir.
Um, his is a single cab, long wheelbase. We could sell it, or we could sell the SO vehicle. It's just, you know, you, you don't have a preference, Sheriff, because you just want to get rid of them.
No, sir, both of these, far as I'm concerned, need to be, uh, surplus or salvage, however y'all declare. And they need to go somewhere, I'll say, to Donnie or to Goddell.
Okay.
Donnie said he'd want to move his toolbox over. Other than that, it's about, it's about a wash from that.
Are the tires good on the 15 on the pickup?
Yes, sir, I believe they are.
Okay. Donnie told me, and I'm 32 years old, he said, if that's what we're going to do, that's fine. If y'all want him to keep driving that 2004. About all he does is go to pickup supplies around here, and every once in a while, have to go to Aveline Pickup Supplies. He goes to Dispatch and mows the yard out there. Beyond that, he doesn't drive it very far, so it's not, it's not building up a lot of mileage. So what's the pleasure of the commission court, what do y'all think?
The only thing wrong with that pickup is the condenser is leaking, the air conditioner, uh, one, one person gave us a bid of $1,500 to fix that. Donnie says, I used to work on air conditioning all the time. He says, most of the expense is taking off the big bumper in front of the grill to get to it. He said, I used to do that. He said, I can probably fix it for $200.
Okay.
He knows the air conditioner business, so.
So if we sell it like it is, then that's going to be a bit of a knock on the budget.
Other than that, it's, it's an okay pickup, just got a lot of miles on it.
Do any of the precincts need a four wheel drive, four door? It's a half ton, isn't it?
It is a half ton.
With a short bed, a five and a half foot bed?
I believe I tried, but it's four door.
Okay. Do we have any need for that in the precinct? Or would we have any need for the 2004 half ton two wheel drive, eight foot bed?
Anything wrong with that one?
No, it still runs. He bought it, or we bought it for him, uh, from a car dealer in Cisco four years ago or so. It's, uh, it's a single cab, long wheelbase, wide bed, two wheel drive. You think you might need something over there?
Yeah, I could use another pickup. We just got one pickup we're using to go to a very different place than at one time. We just have to drop off people and then come back around and pick them up, that's it.
Well, and typically what we do, and James, you're still kind of new to this, but we, the SO would sell the old vehicle, and for whatever they get out of that, they use that to outfit the new vehicles coming in. Is that, are you still outfitting one of the new Tahos with stripes and radios and?
No, sir, this time we're good.
Okay, did it come with a pack or anything?
Yes, it came with everything, the radio.
Oh.
And I used the radio from the other vehicles, and my G50 installed the antenna and put the radios in, so it didn't cost us anything.
Okay.
We're keeping that pretty good on that this year.
Okay, good.
Judge, if I may too, before y'all vote on the Tahoe, I checked the title and the, it, the VIN number, I have a correction. In here, it says 1GNL5. On the title, it is 1GNLC.
C is internal?
Yes, I just didn't want to have to do this three times again.
Okay.
1GNL?
LC, it should be a, right, the C instead of a 5.
Then we don't have, need really declare them anything if we're going to do transfers.
Right, it's just an option for us to discuss if we want to do that.
So, the, the, yeah, I'm trying to pick that up. We need to try to call it a salvage and let them get it on government deals. If you're going to do transfers like that, then there's no.
So we can just transfer from the SO to maintenance?
To maintenance, and maintenance from the precinct two.
That doesn't take court action, has it?
No, yeah.
It's kind of part of the plan, though. We kind of started doing this a few years ago when Sheriff had a 2004 pickup and it started, transmission started getting a little bad on it. We sent that to precinct three, I think, two, three, I think. Then all I need is to declare that, uh, Tahoe then. Is it surplus or salvage?
It's surplus.
I'll declare, I make a motion to declare it surplus.
I'll say.
And so on.
Yep, yep, yep.
We've got a motion to declare a surplus and a second, uh, the 2013 Chevrolet Tahoe. And I'm just reading the whole VIN number, just so we have all that on record. VIN number one, George Nora Lincoln Charles, two Edward 07, David Robert 301334. Now, does that match up with your number, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All right, do we have a vote on that? All in favor of declaring that a surplus and selling them government deals? Say aye?
Aye.
You oppose, same sign? Okay, and that carries. Reddit, would you want to send you the picture to do that, or?
Yes, you can do it, because you have to fill out the condition sheet, and I'm fine with that. But if you give us your first, make sure how long we need to move it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Item number four is to discuss, consider executing agreement with Family Search, if you can vote.
Uh, yes, I had Judge Fields look over this agreement. These people are out of Utah, and I had work done for them from them before. They charge nothing to the county. Uh, what they do is they come in and scan the records. Uh, they also make them available to the public worldwide. And then they also send us a hard drop of what they've scanned, so we can upload it into our system. They are great people to work with. Everything is done in-house, um, and like I said, it's no cost to the county. What I want them to come in and do now is we have probably four filing cabinets full of old census slash school records dating back to the early 1900s. And so that's what they're willing to come in and do. Um, so this agreement is set up for me to sign.
This is the name of the group?
It is called Family Search. They're out of Utah, it's a mom.
Carter Morgan?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Gentlemen, questions or comments about entering this agreement? All right, can we have a motion then to enter into this agreement with a family search and to allow Kathy to sign the agreement?
Motion.
Second. Motion made, taken, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, same sign, and that carries.
Thank you.
Number five is to discuss, consider proposal between CoFile Technologies Incorporated and Eastern County District Clerk's Office in the Culver House. How are you doing?
Good, how are y'all? Good morning.
Will Keating Griffin and Billy in the slate?
Yes. You're perfect.
Portail.
I had this morning, uh, nothing's changed. This is actually from last year, which is a confusion from when I went on maternity leave. They thought I wanted to wait until I had maternity leave, but I sent it before maternity, so I had it by the time I got back, it didn't happen. So I just have to have this approved again through, uh, Commissioner's Court. Um, the contract, the community copy, I have copies, um, but it just needs to be signed, and it just shows the books that I've sent in with them, and then, uh, the, the amounts for each.
Is it set up for you to sign, or me to sign, or?
Uh, I think it's set up for me to sign, but you're welcome to sign it.
It's set up for you to sign, that's fine.
Okay.
Gentlemen, questions or comments about setting up this proposal, thing, proposal from CoFile and Eastern County District Clerk's Office? Okay, we have a motion then to, uh, agree to that, to sign that agreement, and to allow Kathy Culver House to sign it to the CoFile.
No, I'm going to do it.
Second. Made, accepted, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, same sign. You'll sign it, and, uh, we need you to copy that and then to the Clerk of Justice.
Thanks.
Your ladies, I want to call you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item number six. Assistant County Auditor Sonia Neale to present July 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019, travel expenditures review.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sonia.
This office has completed a review of travel expenditures for the period of July 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. The purpose of the review is to verify original receipts were provided to the treasurer's office for hotel stays required for Eastern County business. During the six month review, we issued 24 checks for lodging advance or reimbursement totaled $9,168. The, uh, payment records were verified to include atomized paid receipts from the hotels. There were no variances found, uh, between the check amount and the receipt amount listed on the hotel receipts. And during the review, $1.95 was, uh, received from a hotel and refunded. Uh, the sticker that the treasurer's office is using, um, it goes on the envelope. Um, it states that the responsibility of the traveler, um, has to submit the proper receipts to the county treasurer within the designated time. Um, it appears to be effective, uh, in getting the receipts in in a timely manner.
Okay, uh, gentlemen, any questions or comments on this, uh, report from Sonia about, uh, the review?
Thank you.
All right, can we have a motion to accept that report as presented? Motion made, accepted, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, same sign, and that carries. Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you.
Item number seven is to discuss, consider the fiscal year 2021 budget calendar. Ms. Key.
Yes, sir, after attending Senate Bill 2 training in Stevensville, um, I worked on the proposed budget calendar. And, and the timeline is shorter this year, um, just because of when certified values have to be in. There's, there's changes in the law to that. So what I have here is the proposed, and it's very proposed, um, budget calendar. Starting April 30th, um, value estimates to come in from the Apprington District. At that point, um, the timeline starts, and you'll see that hopefully on September 8th, we hold our second public hearing and adopt the budget and the tax rate. If we go above the no new, no new tax rate and the voter approved tax rate, new language this year, uh, we will be required to have two public hearings. So all that depends on what the proposed rate comes in.
And I really appreciate you going to that training. I was supposed to go to the same training in Lubbock, but my conference got canceled up there. So I appreciate you doing that.
Yes, sir.
Did, uh, Auditor Craig write the program for that?
Yes, sir, he did the first part of it. There were actually three stickers.
It looks like the deadlines are stepped up in, into the year. In other words, they happen faster, it looks like to me. There's no new revenue tax, there's no approval type, like an actual collection order. Ladies and gentlemen, there's not any action on that, so it's just really for information. But while we're all here in the meeting, do we have any questions or comments about this budget calendar? That you would have proposed for us? Again, thank you very much for doing that. Anyone? All right. All right, thank you, Reddit. Number eight is, uh, County Auditor to present fiscal year 2019 juvenile probation audit report.
Um, we, Colleen and company did the juvenile probation audit for fiscal year 2019, and I emailed each of you the report. Um, there were no findings in the report, um, and the fund balance is zero for both of the grants, which is what it's supposed to be. So it was, it was a good audit.
Do you want to have any questions or comments about this audit of juvenile probation? We have a motion then to accept the report as presented. Second. Motion made, accepted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, same sign, and that carries. Um, item number nine, Investment Committee to file minutes of the March 23rd, 2028 meeting. Ms. Key.
You've all got copies of the minutes.
And we're just filing the minutes. We'll go over the 12. I'll go to the next to go behind.
Okay, can we have a motion then to accept that then for filing?
Motion.
Second. And the second, motion second, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, same sign, and the minutes, you all are hereby filed.
We made the second, I'm sorry.
Item number 10 is to discuss, consider the Investment Committee recommendation. Ms. Key was up. What's she stepped up?
Yeah.
Apparently that.
Coming back here to you.
We're on 10 now?
Okay. Liz, you want to lead off?
Uh, we did meet on March 23rd, and at that time, we went over the current, um, investment report along with financial reports. The only fund that we have investments right now for the county is general fund. Um, and in general fund, we looked at the certificate of deposit rates and the investment pool rates. At the time, um, rates were dropping. Um, and Christina Doddgroll called for rates on the CDs. Uh, what the committee decided was that if rates on maturing CDs fell below 0.5%, um, we were going to redeem, redeem the CD and move the money into Texas class, with the exception of Prosperity Bank CD. Um, and Prosperity Bank did come in, and you're going to have to help me with that.
1%.
At 1%. So that one just renewed. Did it renew?
Yes, yes, it renewed.
And then the first financial bank one, we had to redeem it and purchase a new one.
Yes, at 0.65%.
Okay. So that's what happened on, on the two CDs that were maturing.
Also on the one for OPEB, we're getting 0.65%. I had to put that one in, or I need one, I need the new, uh, amount, because the amount changed.
Right, right. Um, but really, there wasn't too much to go over with rates in a downward, um, we were just trying to preserve revenue.
Okay, you want to have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
Hearing nothing, can we have a motion then to, uh, adopt the strategy for the Investment Committee's recommendation? Motion.
Second.
Motion made and accepted, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, same sign, and that carries. Okay, that takes us to 11. Review and adopt the 2020 investment policy. Ms. Key, double.
Um, on the policy, there were really no changes other than, uh, changing anywhere that it referenced this, or 2019, changing it to 2020, and then on the last signature page, changing the precinct two commissioner to Dennis Pranshaw.
Okay, we're on, I just saw something on that page.
What you see?
Says on this, the 28th day of May, 2020.
Wow, well, mine says on the 13th day of May.
Well, this is the one you sent to my office this morning.
Oh, really?
The one I've got on top says on this 28th day of May, the, the.
Okay.
Well, I'm, yeah, I think I might hear a copy of what, what it said to me.
I will correct the signature page during the break.
Okay.
That's okay.
All right, gentlemen, any questions or comments on our investment policy for 2020? All right, do we have a motion then to, uh, adopt this policy as presented?
No.
We have a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, same sign, and that carries. The policy's adopted, and we'll get that out with all the rest of the signature documents today. Item number 12 is, uh, present certificates of completion for TAC cyber security awareness training for county treasurer and deputy treasurers. And Ms. Doddgroll has that.
Yes. We all have copies, Kathy and Judge Phil, we all have copies, uh, myself, Tracy Parker, Amber James, of all papers of cybersecurity. Well, that is required by law.
How'd you get the certificate?
You have, you, it emails you, I think, I think it emails you.
It emailed me, but I never could get that link toward.
At the very end, though, that you hit print.
I hit it. I hit print, it is print.
Yeah, yeah. There's a link?
Okay.
My, my.
Well, I'm still having problems because just like that, text dot email, mine's coming in in code, like the judge was talking about.
Well, I don't get Kathy's, uh, attachments.
No, but you guys do, so it's weird.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's had its Unicor or HTML on your email?
I don't have a clue. It, it's been screwed up ever since TAC reset my password and then sent me the password to be an email and me having to call and say, I can't get the email because I can't log in because you sent me the new password.
While we're talking about this, as soon as I finish my training, which we'll get in mind here in just a minute, and we haven't formally adopted her, or haven't accepted Christina yet, I got an email allegedly from TAC that said, now you need to do part two of your cyber security training. And I mean, it was just like the TAC format.
Okay.
It looked exactly like everything's supposed to be, except when you take your mouse and you put it over the return address. It's completely wrong. It's nothing to do with TAC. So I sent that down to the people at Cyber Security Attack, and they said, oh, no, it's malware, don't open it. So if you get one back that says something about the second part of cyber security training, don't open it, just delete it.
The first part was bad enough, I don't want to take a second one.
I knew, you know, if you remember, like three years ago, we were a pilot county to do this, but I knew there wasn't a second part of it, it was just one part. So when they sent part two, I thought, oh, boy, something wrong here.
It said delete it immediately.
Yeah, it's, it's not something you want to.
Delete, and then delete it from your deleted file?
Yeah, delete, delete.
Judge Fields?
This, ma'am.
Um, Dispatch sent me an email to check. It contained in the subject line in between. It contained in the subject line, in between cybersecurity testing, COVID-19 on it. That's also malware.
Okay, that's awesome, awesome. Did it look like it's from TAC?
Yes, exactly. I had to look at it, and as a matter of fact, ended up calling, simply because it had the COVID-19 in the, the subject line. They were immediately, no, that's not, that's not.
After going through that training, you just take your mouse and scroll over the return address, and you can see where it's really going to go if you hit, you hit open or you return it, you'll see that it's not from TAC.
It says tac system at litmus.com is what the fake malware is.
And it contained litmus.com, which is who actually did the cybersecurity training, the first one, so.
Y'all just be aware, when you're doing your cybersecurity training, that you're trying to, somebody is trying to hack into it. Okay, so we've gotten the certificate completion from Christina Doddrell, from Amber James. Actually, that one's in here, yep, Tracy Parker's in here. May we have a motion to accept those certificates for the treasurer's office?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. And then we'll move to 13. That is present certificates for TAC cybersecurity awareness training, certified state mandated court or county clerk's office. Ms. Key.
I have a certificate for myself, Donna Robertson, Johnny Ettinger, Raina St. Peter, Amy Hazelwood, Amy Harley, and Brooklyn Jarre. Those are all the employees from my office, including records management clerk.
May we have a motion to accept those certificates then as well?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. And then finally, I just put it in as present certificates of completion for TAC cybersecurity awareness training for recent county employees, and this is where I have mine, and where Linda Whitstone has hers. We haven't been able to talk Sherry into it yet, because she thinks she's only got four weeks left. So Andrea, could you help us on that?
Sherry's shaking her head.
Sherry's going, no, no.
She's on her way out.
Let it be such a good training. Anyway, I left that open-ended, in case anybody else has certificate that came in after the time we filed this. Jason, you said some of your folks took that?
We've done, all of us have done it, I didn't realize I needed to turn it into y'all. I think I sent it to the.
Yes, and I, we put copies of this in everybody's packet, didn't we?
Okay. Is my list on the record, then, please?
Yes, and I don't know which order yours are in, but I'm going to read off the order I have.
Will you email those to me as well, please?
Yes.
I don't have copies.
There's no copies.
There's not copies in there? Okay, I apologize. Loretta Key, Pamela Floyd, Sonia Neal, Galilea Olivas. All right, oh, you're not right.
I'm just in offices, yeah.
Robert Bradford, April Rice, Wendell Light, Terry Honi, Wendell Tipton, Darla Tyner, Melvin Henson, Patricia Stovall, Cheryl Marshall, Melissa Gaddy, Susan Main, Felicia Spikes, Jessica, Jessica Trammell, Wendy Irwin, and Jeffrey Lynch also could not get his certificate. He has probably what he has.
Yeah, I saved the email, but I, I didn't, I couldn't get nothing to open up.
Okay, and Judge, I do not have copies of the certificates for you and Linda. And these are actually supposed to be filed with the state, but as of last week, I've had no information on who to file them with yet. So we'll just continue to hold them until we find out.
Do you, do I need to send mine separately, or do I need to send?
You can just send it to me, and I'll just start every time, bringing them to court.
Yeah, I think I did, right, if I did it, but I'll send.
Okay.
So we just need to have something on the agenda each time for a while about item 14.
Yes.
So you did yours, Jay?
I'll put you down, and then Loretta and I'll forward the one to you.
I don't know if Sherry, can, Sherry, can you hear me in there?
Yes.
Would you go ahead and keep item number 14, which is certificates completion for TAC cert cybersecurity, just put it on every agenda until we get work through this process. We've got down into June to get this actually completed. And then this is.
Okay. I'll get it.
Okay. All right, anybody else that needs to take training? Judge Lynn, have your folks taken training yet, or?
We've come across the same problem, where we can't print it out.
Can't get it printed? I've had real good luck calling TAC. The lady I talked to is Rachel Cussera, who is pretty adept with this stuff, she might be able to shoot those to you.
Okay.
Any commissioners, anybody else need to do their certificates this time?
I've done any of that, but I've done nothing.
Okay, when you get your certificate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because all I did was save that email.
Okay.
So you're going to bring it back?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have it on the agenda till we get everybody's certificate in. Okay, that takes care of that, item number 15. I'm sorry.
Accept those.
Make a motion, we accept those then.
All right. Make the made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, you know they'll accept them and files. Item 15 is discuss, consider, propose, or pending contracts and agreements. We have 15A, which is discuss, consider, execute, cost per copy agreement, or maintenance agreement, new equipment between Benchmark Business Solutions and the County of Eastland for county auditors, new copier lease. Ms. Key.
Yes, I talked to Xerox, actually, office staff did it, about a new copier. Ours is just worn out after all the business work, and I tried to do this several months ago, and just could not financially do it. This lease, it is a 60-month lease. It, the lease increases 59, 59.5 a month. And part of that reason is that we're putting a finisher on this one, which is a large capacity output. The copier we have, everything feeds under lease, and when we do policies or budgets, it jams, and then we have to start all over. I'm asking the court to allow Judge Fields to find the lease, and it will increase 2021 budget by that 59.5 per month. This year, obviously, we haven't been able to travel, so I've had money to move, plus there are three payments included. We only have to pay the $8 fee.
Okay, any questions or comments on this proposal with benchmark for the new copier lease for the auditor's office? Do we have a motion to enter into this agreement and allow me to sign the same?
Motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded, and further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to 16, define essential personnel for Family First Coronavirus Response Act, FF-CRA. Ms. Key, I'm assuming that you've been getting a lot of information from our TAC people about how this is supposed to work with FMLA and some new changes?
We have, and we sat through a webinar last week, we're getting very educated through webinars now. And Commissioner Rains also took the webinar. What we learned last week is that we need to define essential personnel, basically emergency personnel, because the new Family First Coronavirus Response Act, which I'm going to now reference as FF-CRA, enhances family medical leave, and if all of our current, our emergency responders are on leave because of this act, then we have no emergency responders. So what was suggested is that we define who is the essential personnel and exempt them from this act.
Now, when you're talking about that, you're talking about not elected officials, employees. Elected officials are under a different classification.
And what was discussed last week, it was basically the emergency responders and maybe some road crew.
Road and bridge.
Just if there's a flood, where they're exempt from this act and, and still have to come to work. Obviously, every one of these offices has a job to do that the elected official knows the job that needs to be done.
Dispatchers also would need to be.
Yes, and, and what I would do, and, and you have a copy of this, it's item 57, from the Department of Labor's facts. What they're suggesting is, it says includes, but is not limited to military or National Guard, law enforcement officers, correctional institution personnel, firefighters, emergency medical services personnel, physicians, nurses, public health personnel, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency management personnel, 911 operators, child welfare workers and service providers, public works personnel, and persons with skills or training in operating specialized equipment or other skills needed to provide aid in a declared emergency, as well as individuals who work for such facilities, employing these individuals and whose work is necessary, necessary to maintain the operation of the facility. And I'd like to read the very bottom of this, because Department of Labor is saying to minimize the spread of the virus associated with COVID-19. The department encourages employers to be judicious when using this definition to exempt emergency responders from the provisions of the FF-CRA.
Well, the one part of the sentence that says his work is necessary to maintain the operation of the facility, that's pretty open-ended.
It is.
You could say that payroll has to be done, documents have to be recorded, license plates, titles, transfers, all of that, auditing has got to be done, make sure we stay on track with the budget, and you could kind of expand that out, because that language says necessary to maintain the operation of the facility.
Yes, sir, and, and, and Brad, you may want to help me here, because you've been doing a lot of study on this, but what we got last week was, we just really needed to do our frontline person, the 24-hour emergency personnel, and then they suggested some road crew, because each of your elected officials knows what their job is and what needs to be done. But this would just make sure that sheriff doesn't have seven road, road deputies out on leave through this act.
It's really emergency response, emergency management is kind of what you would have, which is the public works, which is road and bridge, law enforcement, jail, 911 dispatchers.
Yes, sir.
And the non-elected parts of us.
Right, and there's still an elected official, but it's, it's kind of making sure he has staff to do what he needs to do.
Okay, do you have suggestions about that?
And I'm going to let Commissioner Rains offer a suggestion here.
I think all we got to do is just say we're going to exempt the emergency services and the road and bridge. I think you do a general blanket like that, and you're going to cover the sheriff, the jail, dispatch, the emergency services, which is basically the three departments, and then road and bridge. Because we can't, we're, we're not going to be able, you know, like, well, maybe a couple here and there, we're not going to be able to do that. Ronnie's not going to be able to say, well, I'm going to put David and Dale in it because of what happens if one of them's out of pocket, and he still needs somebody, so we're going to have to do our whole crew to make sure that we, we do get. I do not want another flood at all.
Ever.
Ever. If, or tornado, either, but if we do have something in the situation, we can call anybody we need to to make it done.
All right, you want to put that in the form?
I want to put that in the form.
So, hang on, we're on number 16, we're defining essential personnel.
Yes, essential personnel.
Okay.
Which would be sheriff's office, the jail, dispatch, and road and bridge.
Sheriff, jail, dispatch.
And again, it's typically people that will respond in disaster situations.
Right.
Okay, now I'm right.
Okay. That, that would be my motion, qualify them in the exact size.
Those four departments, segments department. So we have a second.
Second.
Second motion. Brother, get it thought of. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. Okay, we've got the definition done, and then we're going to move on to 17, discuss, consider excluding essential personnel from paid sick leave or expanded family medical leave under the FF-CRA. Ms. Key, plan to exclude them.
This is basically just excluding the defined essential personnel from the leave under the act.
Which was defined under number 16?
Yes.
All right. Alex, you want to put that into the motion?
Yes, sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second. Look at the colorful beer. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that motion carries as well. That takes us to 18, discuss, consider closing county offices for a two-week period. Mr. Mc.
Yes, sir. I've checked around with some of the other counties around, and in with ours, Grant, we, it's like we have three cases now. County Brown is ganging with cases. That one is getting like 25 a day. It's not going to be long till we have them, I think we'll have them. Chance of it blowing up here. Yes, you'll be in those towns, they're literally on purpose. So yes, they're going to be having them. It's going to take a while for it to get into the urban areas somewhat like we are. Yes, we're spread out. But my issue is, yes, doing the social distancing, questioning ends, taking care of everything, but we also said no more than 10 people in the group. They don't have 10 people in the group right now. So we're not even going to set up a person.
Well, if we closed the courthouse, we wouldn't have, we would still have to have commission court meetings.
Yes.
But the best we can do on that so far is get that set up for this live streaming, but we have to have a place for the public to look at it.
Yes.
So, I agree with that.
And Judge Fields, that license is reserved in TAC, I'm training on it right now.
Okay.
It's for WebEx meetings.
And just, just for everybody's information, we're kind of all about it anyway, but the courthouse is basically closed unless you call and make an appointment, and Kathy's got a drop box out there for her, her clients, which is the real estate title companies, the drop box for her box. The TAC has got a drop box for title work. That's all working pretty well, isn't it, Andrea and Kathy, as far as that? Sheriff has got a good system set up to screen everybody that come through. We haven't had a new case in almost, I guess it is now two weeks. We haven't had a new case here in two weeks, we're still at, they're calling it three with a fourth green, presumptive, in other words, they presume it to be. I'm, I'm calling it four. I'm going to go ahead and say we've got four. Brown County has picked up a couple, Mansion County finally got up to two, UCF County has five, and one die. Four.
Here at that's a lot.
There's one in Stevens County, don't know of any, in Shakkaford County, one in Callahan County, Tappan County does have over 50 now.
Over 61 now.
I, I called the county judge, and they didn't have any, and I said, what's going on? He said, it's taken two weeks to get the test back.
And UCF County had closed their courthouse to be cleaned, which is.
Well, I'll tell you, I don't want to go too deep into that, I kind of know what happened there, one county official's got, got a call out to a death scene, and so that's creating an issue for them. Brown County had to have their courthouse just cleaned as well, it was several hundred dollars to get it cleaned.
Gaines County, the only, only one affected is the county. Gaines County, the only, only one affected is the county judge.
Gaines County, county judge got sick. Is it rabies or did he have a corona?
No, he has corona.
Had corona, okay.
We'll have to get back into the rabies.
Now, here's my dilemma. Now, we use the Lhasa aerosol pans, not the pump bottles, but the aerosol pans, to spray down every document that comes in that office. We lightly spray it, even if it's in the drop box. Here's our thing, we, we have no more Lhasa. And you can't use the pump spray that you liquefy yourself because it drenches the documents. It ruins the integrity of the documents.
Are you getting most of your documents e-filed or scanned in?
Usually through the mail, there's a few e-recording, but there's so much service fees on the other end, on the e-recording that people don't want to do. Lawyers don't want to do it, title companies.
They might have to.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to just probably pass it on down to their client.
Absolutely.
But that's my problem. We are crazy spraying Lhasa, which, to protect ourselves, but when we're out, we're out, you can't buy it. I've had Lhasa on my backboard for weeks, and they finally removed my backboard and said, we can't fulfill that.
Well, I bring everybody up to date. The sheriff ran, almost ran out of masks and gloves, and then you need face masks with jail, called PPE, first protective equipment. And we finally got some located in Abilene, and the hospital was going up there to the regional trauma center, and picked up a batch of it for us. And so they brought it down here to us, I took it to jail, to sheriff's office. So we have that, and then we also, I sent out a request for hand sanitizer and the spray disinfectant, and apparently you can't find that stuff anywhere right now. So it may be, it may be opening up more if more people are converting what they make to making hand sanitizer and disinfectant spray. As of right now, it is in short supply. Testing kits are in short supply. Hospital was down to nine testing kits on Thursday, and we made the desperation call to the state and got some more state, some more kits from the state to go to the hospital in the weekend, so they wouldn't run out over the weekend. I don't know, Andy, we're kind of in lockdown already. I just hate to say we're closed, because I don't know if that's going to.
And I would hate to have one of our employees in this county come down with this, and us not take a step further to keep them safe.
And during the training last week, and I see, you know, we, he and I, he brought in Montclair County, talked about with administrative leave. Technically, the way I understood that last week with administrative leave is any department has, is that not true, to send their people home and pay at any time without approval from anybody?
Any official?
Right.
So it has to be elected or appointed?
Right, right. That's what I meant by department.
Well, the elected officials here have kind of already done that. I mean, Tessa closed her doors to incoming traffic. Andrea pretty well shut her doors down to incoming traffic. Kathy is still coming out and picking up some dogs. Tessa, are you taking walk-in dogs?
No, sir.
Okay.
Only by mail.
Ma'am?
Only by mail.
Okay. Andrea, you're doing most of your work by mail or from the drop box, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. You pretty much closed your office to any kind of walk-in traffic. Of course, you didn't get much any money from the public.
From the public.
Interviewing employees and respecting employees, you get some people there.
We have our door closed, yes, but we still shuffle and monitor pay.
And the district attorney's office is closed to the public walking in and dropping off any kind of dogs. We've done a few pleas, tried to get some people out of the jail. That's worked out okay. I mean, we are still open for business. We're still here. Are you saying just to close the door to anybody coming in? Is that kind of your idea?
Close the office completely, shut them down, everybody go home for doing it.
I mean, your department heads are going to be there doing their job anyway. But your employees, for their safety and your safety, I think, I think they should be, I think they should have the right to go home and take care of theirs.
Or you're saying go home and work from home?
I'd hate for someone have their mother or dad or, or their child set up on ventilator somewhere and you not being able to deal with them. Nobody would like that. And it would affect the whole county.
Are you saying go home and work from home?
Those that can, it's fine.
I know some of us don't have real good internet connection at home. Mine was out about half a week.
I understand that. But the fact is, I mean, we need to, I think we need to step up.
I just see no way that I can send my guys home. I mean, I just, I, talking about just me over there, I mean, there's just no way I can send my people home.
And we're still taking care of pro-aid in here. We're done here over the phone. I'm trying to get Zoom set up, we're going to do it over Zoom. And Kathy's taking the e-file docs in, so there's no transmission of any kind of virus for that.
But then there again, we have roughly probably 75 to more percent of the workforce that do have underlying issues are at the age that is most concerning.
Thanks, talking about you being.
Now, am I correct that E-Rex County, the one that the judge was talking about, because they have an additional employee?
I believe so.
Outside of the one that you and I visited about. I think they had an employee that works in the courthouse, excluding that one that Judge Phil was talking about.
That's what I was hoping.
So it's like two county employees.
Yes, lady, I believe.
One that got called out, so they have to call them in.
When all this started breaking loose, the, the county, several county judges around here, and I built a text chain, so we can kind of keep up to things, because we're getting people from the Mansion Hospital or Brownwood Hospital that were living in Eastern County, so we all kind of started keeping up to what was going on.
Several of them that have gone up here were refused the test, told to go home and stay in the house for 14 days.
Maybe they didn't meet the criteria. I don't know. I want somebody in a white coat to tell me what needs to be done about the medical issue.
You know, and some people have symptoms, some don't, but they're still carriers.
Yeah.
That's an issue right there. One of the tests is positive, never did get sick, and so I don't know exactly how that's going to work.
But they can still transmit the virus.
We're having meetings with the local health authority, who's Dr. DeLuca and Ted Matthews and the director of nurses about three times a week to get caught up on where we are and everything. Then we send out a media release, which goes out to newspaper and to Julie's Microplex News.
Any of the other department heads have any issues? Like to voice their opinions?
Well, the men, yeah, exactly. Judge Glenn has still got to go if he gets a call out.
There's a, there's an exposure in the jail right now.
There is?
Yes.
Sheriff, are you aware of that?
No, sir. First time I've heard about it.
I notified the DA about it. I notified all the officers involved that were near this person, she's isolated. I talked to Dr. DeLuca over the weekend as well. I was gas, I have an old Army gas mask that found its way home with me when I retired, and I told the jail staff, I don't care if I do cause a riot, I'm wearing it, and I went and read her rights. Myself and Judge Spear, I had three inquests this weekend. Once again, I got, I've covered up and everything, but who knows what we bring in and out of the office, and Stephanie, we don't know if we're exposing her.
Well, and the others that should come in contact, go throughout the courthouse, either shuffle paperwork or.
No more coffee for him.
At least if I have coffee. Where are you on coffee?
And that's the thing, everybody comes to the same door, yes, they're getting scanned down there, but you're on different floors, you're in different offices, but you're still going to the exact same area, you're all still using the same restrooms. I mean, even though you're not showing symptoms, you can still have it.
There again, though, if Judge Glenn and/or Judge Spear want to send Stephanie home, that's their, they can do it. Ain't no, no question about it, they can do it, she's going to get paid. We have no, no authority to say no or heck no or whatever, but it leaves it up to them. I think we need to leave it up to the individual elected officials to make their decision.
Well, I think that's kind of what we've already done with, with Tessa's office and with Kathy.
Well, I'm talking about sending your people home.
But I was worried about sending them home because of pay. Would they get paid, would they not get paid? And that's what they were asking me, because last time we were in the meeting, I asked, and it wasn't answered.
Yeah.
And we didn't, we weren't sure about how that worked.
Yeah. The way, the way I understood it was, y'all send them home, we got to pay them.
If you give them administrative leave.
That's the term, administrative leave.
They are paid.
Now, if you do send them home.
That's the question for how long. Andy's talking about two weeks, so.
I don't, I didn't hear a time limit.
No.
Well, I think Andy is talking about for us for right now, looking at two weeks. That kind of gets us up. This is the 13th.
Well, they, they said pay period, they suggested pay period to pay period, I believe what they said.
And they did, but because if commissioners' courts took action, there would need to be commissioners' courts, commissioners' court.
Yeah, yeah. Well, even on administrative leave, I mean, the only thing I would think for documentation purposes, on the time sheets, it needs to be documented that they're at home for administrative leave.
Right, right. And for workers' comp purposes too. We need to know where everybody is. Are they here?
If they get hurt at home, they're still hurt at home.
Well, I think if they can work from home, they can work from home.
No, it is.
Oh, it is? Well, yeah, but they're not going to be able to work at home. Stephanie's not going to be able to work at home. She doesn't have access to that data at her house, so she's not going to be able to work at home.
Actually, with the laptop, we've already checked it. She can get on.
She can?
Yes.
There you go. I think if they can work from home, they can work from home, and they'll be working.
Here's my concern with everybody.
We're going to have to keep log down with information that we're going to process after two weeks if we don't stay, don't we?
Here's my concern with everybody taking a county computer home and connecting to their personal internet, because their personal internet may not be secured. So then we just put a county computer on an unsecured personal internet connection.
Let me call this in.
Well, we need to have, Carrie would have to have that Trin Micro installed on it, because that's what he done to mine when I work out at the house.
And my laptop has it on.
Yeah.
What do you think, Joe?
So if, if you do send them home in administrative leave, sorry, I'm finishing my thought here, Judge. So they'll have to be questioned when they come back to work. This brings to mind, we had a pro-aid hearing via telephone last week. And the gentleman was out of Abilene, and he worked for the city of Abilene, and his boss told him, if you leave the city limits, when you come back, you have to go home for two weeks to quarantine, or 14 days, mess with his stipulations.
I've got an issue coming up with two guardianships, two new guardianships that need to get in place pretty quickly.
And see, that's.
I don't know how we're going to do that unless we have a hearing, and I've got social distancing, and it's going to be less than the 10 people. And we'll have as many people here telephonically as we can, but there's not going to be, not going to be, you know, four or five people here. We got to get these two guardianships set up, I'm going to guess it up. So we're going to be, I think if we just say we're closed, you're going to put stuff on hold that really can't be on hold very long. I don't know. I can see your point, Andy, but I can also say that we need to keep doing business in whatever, however we can. We're kind of limping along now.
I can see your point too, but I, I think we need to leave it up to the department heads and not the five of us telling everybody to go home for two weeks. Because I think that opens the door for another situation is, okay, are we going to pay the sheriff's office overtime for those two weeks because we're giving everybody else time off for fast? And normally when we do that, we pay them their overtime for that two weeks, for those days. Holidays, for example, they make extra money.
If we make.
If we make a commissioners' court decision to send all other personnel home, our emergency service personnel and dispatch can get paid overtime for those two weeks.
Let me ask Margaret and Julie, you're the only two, unelected, unappointed, unemployed by the county people in here. How does it look to you two ladies about closing the courthouse? Closing the courthouse? Julie, you go first.
I think the way you've probably got it set up sounds like the best decision to me. And my thinking is, when you're talking about kind of risking people, you got a whole bunch of grocery store clerks and Walmart clerks that have to be there and probably aren't making as much money as these guys are, that, you know, we're telling them they have to stay there, and how much at risk are they? So, you know, I think, I just kind of think on that whole general thing.
Margaret.
Well, I believe the courthouse has to keep running in some capacity, but if things get worse here regarding the coronavirus, then I think it might be something to think about.
If we start getting some more positives or?
Donna, do you have anything to say?
I don't mean to tell you this first, but.
What she did.
Well, I, I can definitely see some concerns, like with what Andy's saying, we're all, like, for these first three floors, there's 42 to 45 people just on these three floors. That's a lot of people coming in and out. They're running here, they're coming here. You hope that those people are exercising good judgment, but you, you don't know. You don't know. And that's how we have to look at it in the office, that we hope everybody is using good judgment, but you don't know. So you sort of have to look at everybody like they already carry it or possibly have it to protect yourself.
Is anybody using masks and gloves? Any department using masks and gloves?
We're using gloves, we use gloves.
Do y'all wear any masks?
We haven't so much the masks now, because we're all there in that office together already, so we haven't, yeah.
The other side of that is, and I'll throw you back, and just for what you said there, if we send everybody home, does that going to mean everybody goes home?
That's true.
It don't, I guarantee you.
You're going to Walmart.
Yeah, they're going, not everybody's going to go home and stay home, so.
Well, you have to go to the grocery store.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
I've seen more, I was at Walmart yesterday, I've seen more people wearing masks and gloves. It's becoming commonplace.
Yes, you definitely want to wear it when you're out.
Can I add one more thing?
Ms. Smith.
My, my thinking is also that you were intending to try to send more people work from home, or anything like that that you can do, I think is real important. I mean, the more you can separate and keep people safe, the better, but you still have to run business, so.
I think closing and sending us home doesn't mean we're not going to do our job. I don't think that anybody in this courthouse would go home and not do their job.
Not do it, yeah.
To their fullest potential.
So now, are you going to send your employees home, since you know, you know now?
Am I going to send them home right now? No.
No.
Within my office, if we stayed here and I knew they were going home and they were going straight home and doing their thing, but still, you know, we're exposed, and it's so it's like, it's so unknown that it's, it's hard to make a decision. We're danged if we do and we're danged if we don't. And so it's hard, and it is, but at the same time, when I go home, I have an infant who can't tell me she can't breathe, so how do I, how do I with my, in my home, make her safe? But how do we, we're making like, in my office alone, yeah, I feel okay, but I'm still walking in and out the door with how many people? And so it's so unknown to, you know, we, we don't know what to do, but I'd rather be safe than sorry on some occasions, so it's just a hard decision to make, and I think it's something that's within each department we're going to have to make. And I see Robert's point in, do we, do we pay them overtime? Or do we, we have all these different scenarios, but at the same time, what's the safest thing we can do?
What do you think, Ms. Kristina?
It's hard. I see those sides, but my office still has to run. We still have to receive money, we still have to pay bills, we still have to pay. It doesn't stop.
Yeah. If you don't show up, they answered your question, no, nobody's going to get paid.
Right, right. Exactly. But what about the employees for the business, you know, who are high at risk, but their official doesn't agree with, you know, anything, then just closing down or anything? So those, those that are at high risk, that are in those offices are stuck. They get paid or they don't get paid.
Hello? I'm, I'm going to speak to several things, because my office too has payables and payroll that will not stop, but I can work on reduced staff. And I'm going to quote a friend this weekend, "You're only as safe as the least responsible person you're around." In my office, I think we're all very safe, but I also have employees that have to walk
In my office, I think we're all very safe, but I also have employees that have to walk through other offices, so we cannot go in, close our doors and not be around each other. We are on top of each other as it is, and then we have to walk through, I can walk out and Gaddy can walk out, but Pam and Sonia have to walk through our offices to go anywhere. And yes. Well, and let's talk about the mail machine.
Is anybody wearing masks and gloves in your office?
We purchased masks last week. We have not started wearing them. I did wear a mask in Walmart Friday night.
I think there's more that we can do with the PPE that we have available.
We don't have gloves. We, we don't.
Donnie's, I just dropped off Donnie another box of gloves down there.
And that, that's a concern to me, because like I said, we touch paper, this paper in front of y'all, do you know who touched it?
No.
I mean, honestly. And we're, we're touching paper, we have tried to eliminate the move of paper, but it's impossible. Then what we touch goes to Christina's office, or what they've touched, receipts that different offices have all touched, then come to Christina, which come to us and go back to Christina. So there's a lot of movement.
Here's the bottom line, we, we can't just stop. We might be able to alter how we do business with people wearing masks and gloves, but I don't think, I've got two people, two members of the public here that have expressed their opinion, and I kind of agree with them, we can't just stop doing the business of the county. Do we open it up for more potential? Well, yeah, and so did I go to Walmart yesterday, opened up more potential, me getting sick. So I had to go to Walmart and pick up some things. So, you know, I guess if the elected official that's over the department says, go home, they can go home. I don't know exactly how that's going to fit into the payroll plan, if you tell them to go home, but I think we've got to keep going. You know, we're just at a real reduced rate of capacity right now about what we can do. So I'm real concerned with it as well, but we've also, I've got to balance it off between keeping things running enough to make everything work for the public, for the employees.
I think each department head elected, appointed, however, can make the decision that best suits or best fits the needs for that office better than we can. And, you know, it, it, and it's just like Loretta was talking about downsizing staff. I know the city of Sisto, we're alternating. It's three on four, off, four on three.
City of Sisto's doing that too, so they're all, all at six at the same time.
So they've got, they've got skeleton crews running, so, you know, you, you can look at a situation like that where, okay, you're off this week, y'all work next week. I mean.
Yeah, but still, those people that are off, are they going home?
Yeah, well.
Are they going to?
They're going home.
Yeah, you don't know. I mean, you don't know. I mean, but what, having them all come in, what's that going to accomplish? Because they're doing the same thing with it there. I mean, you know what I'm saying? And, and us closing, basically, just locking the door for two weeks, not going to stop any of that from happening.
And I, I think it sends a real wrong message to people that we work for, which is the public.
Yeah.
Sorry, but I just think I put it under for discussion.
Yeah, and we're still going to do our jobs regardless.
Right.
Like Tessa said, not, none of us would intentionally go home and just not do anything.
Yeah, but me telling you or us voting up here and saying, okay, close your office and send everybody to the house, is not best suited for what's for your office.
Exactly.
You know what's best suited for your office.
Just like Tessa closed her office three, two.
A week before the courthouse closed.
So, you know, she, she's an elected official, department head, she made that decision to best fit her.
Yeah.
And then the tack office was not long after that, so, because there's a lot of foot traffic in there, basically, in both offices.
I think it would be nice if we could do it consistently with each department. A lot of the other counties have gotten together with other department heads and they've made it work where it's consistently with everyone, whereas like, I'm going to do this, she's going to do that.
Open line of communication between the departments.
It's very nice when they can work together.
Well, if we adopt what Robert's talking about, and I'm kind of leaning that direction, each department head gets to decide what they want to do.
We don't necessarily have got that, it's out there, that's the way it is.
But the other way, if we would adopt something through Commissioners Court.
Right.
Like in the fourth.
Right.
Which is how we close, basically, when you close the front doors of courthouse, we just shut them down except to walk in.
The, the only thing that I would say that if we're going, if adopt anything, would be a, some sort of guideline or, or something about if administrative leave is used, a documentation source of who it is. That, that way, wherever, if Tessa sends her people home, payroll knows that her people were at the house, working from the house, just for documentation purposes, you know, that, that would be my idea.
Well, let's, let's try this then, with Andy's discussion, does any of the Commissioners want to make a motion that we close the courthouse for two weeks? And I'm not sure exactly how that, close the courthouse, we close the annex, whatever. Anybody want to make that motion? Okay, I'm not seeing that motion. All right, so, in our policies and guidelines, we already know that the elected official has control over what happens in his or her department. And that's kind of what we're operating under now. Does anybody see a better way to do what we're doing now, except people start wearing PPE? Because we've got it, we need to start using it. I might be able to get some more, I got some last week from Texas Army National Guard, and most of them went to the nursing homes. I took a load down at Rod and Star, Ranger already got theirs, and Sisto, Eastland, Woodlands are part of the hospital district, part of the hospital system, so I sent a rest of it to the hospital and they distributed it out. I might be able to get some more PPE if we need it. They've got more of that than they do of the hand sanitizing elements. So I can get probably more PPE if you're going to use it in your, in your office or wherever. Do we need more of that?
We're good in my office, except for the lots of aerosol paint.
You've got, you've got the gloves and the mask.
Yes, sir.
I took the other box too.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Over there. I'm saying, let's keep going like we're going, let's just use the mask and the gloves. If your elected official thinks that, you know, the danger is high enough that we need to do something, that elected official that's your department head can send you home to work from home. I think we need to try to keep going.
Can we just discuss custodial for a second?
Sure.
Even though there's not public coming into the courthouse, we're still flowing in, how is the cleaning measures that they're taking? Are they wiping down handrails, cleaning the bathrooms, bleaching the floors?
I know that they are, because I see them.
Consistently every day.
Yeah, multiple times a day. This courthouse has never smelled, Sam, except before. It's like walking into.
Yeah, the bleach is strong, but I just want to make sure.
It's like walking into the, you know.
They don't become lax.
Front car of the hospital. They're not becoming lax, that I can tell. Donnie said that he got a bunch of disinfectant, just luckily, before this all hit, he bought some and had it, and that's what he was using. But he may be using some now that's made up out of bleach to kill.
Well, you can't order none.
The bleach and water, if the right proportion works, they say. Okay, anybody else have anything else? Andy, thank you for bringing that up for a discussion.
If I may, because my office gets a lot of phone calls, and the call I'm getting is what is Commissioners Court going to do? And I think, I think the officials overall are just wanting some direction from Commissioners Court.
Well, I would say, if you think you're more at risk for some reason, then you could consider sending your employees home, as long as the office can still function, or if you think that wearing personal protective equipment might be a good idea, if you're in a high-volume office, or if you're sitting on top of each other, then you need to glove up. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I, I'm good with that. I mean, I think each, each office holder, elected, appointed, however, can make the decision. How, however, and I understand what Kathy's talking about too, being uniform, but how can Judge Glenn be uniform with one person? I mean, there's no, it's an either or, I mean.
We do different things. We do so many different things.
Yeah, there's so many different ways that you can make it work to be better, that it's not, I don't know that uniform or us giving a guideline to it is going to work for everybody. As been said a jillion times now, there's not a one-size-fits-all type deal for even the offices within the courthouse.
Well, the uniform rule that we have is, your department head gets to make a decision about how that department operates.
Right.
That's what we've done all the, the entire time, so.
You know, it, the, what I want everybody to understand is, if you send your people home, we're going to pay your people. I mean, that's simple enough. If you send your people home underneath administrative leave, your people will get paid.
All right, anybody else have any questions or comments? Rush, you came in a little late.
Well, my position is, I'm an elected official, I can do for my, my office what I want to do.
Right.
And I don't want to set any precedent at the Commissioners Court, trying to tell me how to run my office.
Right.
That being said, every one of my employees is working every day. Half my staff is working from home. And I'm going to continue that. I believe this courthouse is set up to where, right now, each department should be able to operate from reduced staffing pretty easily. And if you really look at your department, you can find things for your employees to do at home. I'm sending my staff home with computers, with a VPN, virus protection, and we're accessing that data, and we're working just like we would if we were here at the courthouse, and we've been doing that.
We can't do anything about net data sucking. I just want.
At least, we do staffing, 50% staffing.
Or alternate. I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Or alternate, yeah.
You know, you work these days?
We're doing 100% of our job every day, and we'll continue to do that. I just don't have my entire staff coming to the office, but they are working.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I was at 97 this morning, I came in, so I guess I'm good.
Yeah.
Catch you seven back.
He's done told Donnie, don't spray me with anything. He said he can live on him, but I saw he ain't going to kill it.
Well, you're jumping off God's ravies.
Well, that's true, I did tell him that.
That's right.
For the record, after that last meeting, I was stopped on the road, nothing said. Well, I understand that K-Tap said the judge has the coronavirus. I said, no, no. The judge said, we have one case of the coronavirus. The judge has rabies. And no lie, they said, how'd he get rabies? I said, wait, what? I'm kidding, okay?
Let me allow, can we have a motion taken short later?
Yes, sir.
Motion taken short later. Thank you for wanting me here.